I'm Virginia Wilbur and we're gonna call the January 12th Regular Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission meeting to order. We are still meeting remotely by Zoom due to COVID-19. So I will make a point to check in both. Eric or John, is someone in the chambers? Or is everyone by Zoom today?
There is no one in the chambers, so everyone has to participate either through Zoom or over the phone.
Okay, so when we get to time for comments or applicants, we'll make sure that we get everybody who's on the call addressed. First item on the agenda is approval of this afternoon's agenda. Any discussion or revisions?
A move we approve?
I'll second it. That's certainly.
Any discussion? Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved, motion passed. Next, we'll move on to approval of minutes from the regular meeting on December 1st, 2020. Any discussion, questions, revisions?
Move for approval.
Okay.
I will second that, Cody.
Okay. There's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, minutes approved. Next, we'll go on to the financial report for November 2020, please.
Okay, this is Schrader with the financial report. This is through 11:30 of 20. On the revenue side. Looking down through there. So we should be just short of 50%, and most of them are. Couple of ones are at 53%, but a few are a little under, but it's looks like pretty well in line. And then on the expense side, 42%, 25%. Just kind of looking down through, don't see any over the 50, so we're looking really good on the expense side.
Any questions for Eric? Hey, do we have a motion to place the report on file?
I'll make a motion that we replace the budget report on file as is.
There a second?
Hold him in, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next, we will have time for oral presentations. This would be a time for anyone who is on the call, who is present to speak on a non-agenda item. If there's anyone who's here to speak, again, on an item that is not already on the agenda, can you identify yourself with your name and your address at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. So we will go on to new business. The time is 4:04 PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately 39 acres from A1 Agricultural District to the M2P Planned Industrial District located east of 2971 Independence Avenue. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview, aerial, and a notice map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on December 23rd, 2020." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file. Takers?
Sorry, my wife interrupted me off. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First, we will have the staff report, and then after that time, we will, if the applicant is present, will, or someone on behalf of the city is present, will talk to them as well. All right.
To start off with staff, their request would not appear to have a negative impact on neighborhood as the area's adjacent properties on the M2P. Their request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic movements in the area. Area is served by Independence Avenue, which is classified as a collector.
Get down, Holly. Down.
The area proposed site is currently zoned A1 Agricultural District as a zone and such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. Surrounding land uses and their zoning to the north is agricultural zone M2P Planned Industrial District. To the south is agricultural zone C2 Commercial District and A1 Agricultural District. To the east is Ferguson Distribution Center Zone and agricultural zone M2P Planned Industrial District. And to the west is residential, a mobile home park, and agricultural zone A1 Agricultural District, R4 Multiple Residence District, and M2P Planned Industrial District. Homes in the area were built between 1919 and 1940, and Ferguson Distribution was built in 2004. A portion of the property in question is located in a flood hazard area, the zone A flood plain and in a floodway. So any future development would have to take that into consideration when the site plan is submitted. The City of Waterloo is requesting to rezone approximately 39 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District for future industrial development. A portion of the area being proposed for rezone was acquired by the City of Waterloo for industrial development. The city then demolished an old farmstead, except for a few properties immediately to the west to have the proposed rezone. All properties that surround these properties are zoned M2P Planned Industrial District and as a considered part of the Northeast Industrial District. In addition, the future land use map for the properties does designate this area as industrial. A portion of property is in a 100-year flood plain and the floodway, and a future development, they need to take this into account for their development plans. Therefore, the staff recommends that the request to rezone approximately 39 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District be approved for the following reasons. Their request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding the area. The area is mostly surrounded by land that is zoned M2P Planned Industrial District and is adjacent to Ferguson Distribution Center, and the properties in question are classified as industrial on the future land use map.
Anyone have, any commissioners have questions for John?
Yes, actually, this is Eric Do Not. Just wanted to ask, is there any concerns about the drainage concerns from Jamie Knutson and Engineering? Have those concerns been resolved?
Drainage issues on this?
Well, there will, there will, excuse me if I can find it. It's on page 19 of the packet. In the first item where it talks about Jamie Knutson with the City Engineering Department had questions regarding drainage issues with the site indicated that he received calls from the Navy and property owners during heavy rain events.
That's the wrong request.
Yeah, that's the next request.
Oh, that's the next request. I was just looking down to where I had the first note, sorry.
No wonder I was confused.
Are there other questions for John? Or John, is there anyone else that, from the city that was, needs to, is here to speak on this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine, Eric. Any other questions for John? Okay. Is there anyone else on this call that is present to speak on this agenda item? If there is no one here to speak on this agenda item, we want to have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, Lystico.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carrying. Is there any discussion amongst the commission or a motion?
Commissioner Sirfling, I'll make the motion that the request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately 39 acres from A1 Agriculture District to M2P Planned Industrial District located at east of 2971 Independence Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The area is mostly surrounded by land that is zoned M2P Planned Industrial District and is adjacent to the Ferguson Distribution Center. And the properties in question are classified as industrial on the future land used map.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. The time is 4:12 PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for request by L and BBLLC for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District, divide two existing lots into six residential lots located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive, changing the previously approved site plan from two duplexes to six single-family homes and increase of two units. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview, site, plan, aerial, and a notice map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on December 23rd, 2020." Do I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first, we will have the staff report, please.
Eric, are you gonna read it since Seth's not on the call?
I did not realize that Seth was not on the call.
I just realized it.
This is Schrader with staff. I will attempt to try and not just read everything and be brief on here, but so this is a request for a site plan amendment that would change the approved site plan. The previously approved plan was for two duplexes, and the proposed site plan is for six lots for six single-family homes. So an increase from four units to six units, so an increase of two units in the previously approved plan. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area. Would appear that the proposed residential uses would blend in well with surrounding neighborhood, which consists of three commercial buildings, multifamily condominiums, twin homes, and single-family homes. Proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have an impact on traffic conditions in the area. Area in question was originally rezoned from A1 Agricultural to R3 RP Planned Residence District back in 1975 as part of the overall development of that entire Southland Park subdivision. The property in question was comprised of two lots that were originally designated for commercial development. A site plan amendment was approved back in 2016 to change the designated use of the site from commercial to residential to allow two duplexes. Proposed site plan amendment area is not located within a special flood hazard area as indicated on the currently effective FEMA floodplain maps. However, it should be noted that FEMA is in the process. They've developed a set of preliminary floodplain maps that a draft set of those maps are out, but the maps are not yet effective. But on those preliminary maps, the area in question is shown as within the 100-year floodplain. The applicant had previously obtained approval to place fill on the site and is predominantly complete with the filling of the area, which will bring those areas above the 100-year base flood elevation. All homes on the site will have a finished floor elevation of 874.2 or higher, and the site plan amendment area has a base flood elevation of 873.2. So it will meet all floodplain requirements even once the new floodplain maps are adopted. It is located about 400 feet from Prescott's Creek. The area does have a 50-foot drainage easement along the southwesterly and southeastern sides of the property. As noted, the applicant's requesting to construct the six homes on that south and east side of Charm Drive. Because it's zoned R3 RP, it is considered site plan specific, and since the previous site plan was for two duplexes, a total of four units, and the proposed use is six single-family homes, that's an increase of two units, that does require that it go through this site plan amendment approval process. A similar site plan amendment to allow for the construction of six single-family homes on these exact same two lots was tabled by the Planning and Zoning Commission back on November 14th, 2017, and the applicant then later withdrew the request. Much of the opposition that was received at that time was based upon drainage concerns and had concern with the lots being filled to raise the elevation of the building sites. However, as it was noted earlier, the lots have been legally filled and will comply with all floodplain requirements even once the new floodplain maps become effective. During the technical review committee, Jamie Knutson, the city engineer, did note that this area has, in heavy rain events, seen some flooding, and that they have received calls from neighbors expressing concerns on drainage issues in the area. Wendell Lookus, the engineer for the applicant, who may be on the call, I'm not sure, did indicate that they would apply for a letter of map revision that would remove the portions of the lots where the building sites are out of the floodplain. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by L and BBLLC for a site plan amendment in the R3 RP Planned Residence District located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive be approved as the proposed use would appear to have a positive impact on the area by bringing additional housing on vacant land within a residential area. The proposed use has a drainage design to properly direct storm water from the development through the plating process. And the proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and would appear to be compatible to existing development. The proposed development is within the density requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district, and the area was previously approved commercially. So single-family homes would appear to be more compatible with and have a positive impact on the neighborhood. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, etc., including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, etc. Any questions for staff?
So this is Do Not. I'm assuming in the presentation of the staff report that Jamie Knutson's question was answered in the process? That's what I'm gathering in the presentation?
Jamie's online, so I'll let him talk.
Yes, it was. The, I just wanted to, at the time we were having the technical review, just to let the applicant know that we have had some calls from concerned citizens out there about drainage. Try to explain to them how the subdivision was originally designed and certain areas are supposed to flood and, or at least have water in them, not necessarily flood, but they were designed that way, and they're working the way they're supposed to, but sometimes it's hard for, for folks to, to understand that. And then, so along with that, why they've also provide, or will be providing a detention basin and for this, for this development, which will help to limit water getting out into those areas. So from our, from engineering standpoint, we are, we are in good shape.
Okay, and then what have we heard from the neighbors themselves? Are they still saying the same things that they have, have said in 2017? Or are they, are they comfortable at this point as well?
This is Schrader with staff. I know we have gotten at least the one call and the email, and the email with a couple of pictures is what I did forward on to the planning commission the other day. John, are you, or, well, I guess Seth's not on. John, are you aware if there were any other calls that we received?
Last time I talked to Seth, on Friday, there had not been any other calls.
If there aren't other initial, oh, go ahead, was that Tricia?
This is Christian Olson, a resident at 4414 Charm Drive. I'm in one of the.
Mr. Olson, just, just one second. This is Virginia. We'll give you a chance to talk. Let me, let me see if the commissioners have any other questions for the staff, and then we'll, I promise, we'll get, we'll get to you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
My questions were completed.
Okay, any other commissioner questions for staff?
No.
Okay, is the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant on the call and wanted to speak to the commission first? Okay, we'll go to.
Mike, is that you?
Yeah, I'm here. I thought Wendell was on the, on the line also. I thought maybe Wendell would speak, but my only comments are that, you know, we experienced a pretty good rainfall this last fall, or late summer, early fall. And I know the concerns of the neighbors have been that there has been flooding. At that time, the fill had been relatively completed. And I took pictures of that area just to record. And what was designed to happen there after reviewing with Wendell, it did what it's supposed to do. I mean, it holds back water in certain areas and let flow on the north side of Charm. The sump pump discharge lines were still exposed. On the north side, the 50-foot easement that there for the waterway was working as it was supposed to do. And if I, I'm not an engineer, but if I am to state something, that would be that, given the fact that this land has now been filled and requires a retention pond, the drainage from said property should be controlled better after this work is completed than was previously before the fill was added. I'm not an engineer, but that's the way I understand it. Wendell can add more to that.
Wendell, are you on the line and able to hear us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, Mike's correct. Actually, I've been at this long enough that that was one of the early jobs I was on when I worked for a company called Bryce Patrini's way back when. That was originally just a farm field out there, and Southland Park was, was a development that would, that was in that floodplain area. All the original engineering went through the DNR, and there was fill placed out there. The streets were brought up to the 100-year elevation, and then all the, the building pads and all that. So that, from the very beginning, was the design of this subdivision area. The thing is, Prescott Creek still functions as it did before the subdivision was there. It rains, there's 10 square miles approximately that, that drain through there. So when we have a bigger rain to the south, Prescott's Creek will come up. The water will back into subdivision, and then when the, when Prescott Creek goes down, the water will again go downstream to the Blackhawk and onto the Cedar. And so the fill that's placed there doesn't restrict the water from leaving. It, it just basically restricts the amount of area that gets covered with those waters from Prescott Creek. So I guess it's basically finally being built the way it was originally designed and approved, so.
Great. Any initial questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Olson, I know you're on the phone. Go ahead and state your name for the, the record, and then your address, please?
Yeah, thanks for the attendance. Christian Olson, 4414 Charm Drive. So I'm right here, one of the new builds right along the ditch, actually, that, that's been mentioned. So the very far east house of the last six that, that Skogman built. And I just wanted to express my approval to have this to move forward. I do support the six, the six houses being built there versus the two duplexes, and have experienced 2018, when I moved in, is, I think it was the highest rainfall on record in Waterloo, and experienced that event as well as the discussed six inches in 24 hours this last spring. And when that fill was there, I did watch, you know, all the water back up. And actually, my sump pump has still never ran through all those events with this new house. So I still view that as, as a positive to have, have those six houses built, even with, I know some neighbors' concerns around the flooding, but do not feel that it impacts any of the additional area with the way the water drains off. So I just wanted to, I guess, support even what Mike was talking about, the way that, the way the water works around here, so.
Thank you. Are there other persons on the, on the phone that want to speak on this item?
Yep.
Okay, I think, okay, just make sure you, you speak loud and clearly and state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Jacob Whitmire. I live at 4705 Twin Pines Drive. I'm the one that sent them the email with the photos. I don't know if everybody. I'm the one that sent them the email with the photos. I don't know if everybody was able to view those or if that's something I can share on the call as well. Yeah.
Those are the photos that you took?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I know Mister Olson said that his sump pump didn't run this summer, mine did, and we were one of at least six houses that did get flooded. Um, so they're right, what I'm showing you right there is, um, and if you can go to the next picture as well, it kinda shows a complete picture of the area. But, so that whole fill area, you know, like everybody has talked about was for water and was taking on water. But basically that area kind of acted like a bowl before. And now that whole bowl has been filled in, so. I don't know where the plan for the water to go is, but whatever the current plan uh is and the current setup, it's not working. And you know, we were assured that flooding wouldn't be an issue. I've lived here for over twelve years. And this was the first time that I actually was flooded. Now, water has been an issue, uh, yeah, so. Any of the water that you see in both of these photos is normally not there. And this is from, uh, this is on the same side of the street looking into the area uh in question. And so that, the dry, the water that you see and then the dry area in the background, that dry area is the new elevated area that has been filled. But my question is, you know, now that there is all, you know, fifteen feet of fill. Plus six more houses, you know, with, I'm assuming basements. I just don't know what, you know, how this plan, how everybody keeps saying that, you know, everything is functioning as it should when there was at, at least six homes that got flooded. You know, this year, but had never been flooded before. So I don't have, you know, my, uh, you know, I'm fine with the construction, but I'm, I have, my problem is that. It's affecting, you know, this, this whole neighborhood and you saw that in that other photo, you know, that's a four foot fence that's underwater over there. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what the plan is and if, if indeed we are being considered. Um, because there's already a taxpaying base here that's being, you know, affected quite a bit by this.
Um, this is Virginia. Eric, are you able to show us on a map? Um, where Mister Whitmire's property is or where those photos are? In relation to like the detention basin or?
I can try, um, Mister Whitmire, what was the address again?
Twin Pines.
Oh, just the, okay.
So it butts up against.
I'm just gonna go to the Blackhawk County Real Estate Mapping. I gotta switch what screen I'm sharing here. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so Twin Pines. Is what's in yellow. That's the condo development. The two lots in question. Are that lot in yellow. And that lot in yellow. There is a fifty foot drainage easement. Oops.
So my property is right just south of your mouse, of your cursor, right there, Eric.
Okay.
Right there, right?
Yep, and the pictures that you saw were looking out into that, um. Bear area.
I'm just kind of trying to quickly and crudely just draw in here, but can you see those red lines?
I think that's fairly accurate.
So that is the fifty foot drainage easement along the southwesterly property line. And then there is a fifty foot drainage easement along the southeasterly property line. So those are the areas that are designed to take the drainage. From this en- entire area. And then there are culverts under Charm Drive in this area here. And there's a drainage easement along this property as well. And it eventually outlets into Prescott's Creek, which is just off the screen there. The proposed six lots will be along Charm Drive and will have a detention area. If you, can you see my cursor?
Yep.
In this area here, so all of the runoff from these six lots will go into this detention area here. Before then being slowly released into the drainage easement.
So my concern is that, uh, previously that whole area was on filled. And that whole area, um, you know, basically from, you know, red mark. All the way over to Charm, Charm Drive. That whole area, that entire area would fill with water, would effectively be a reservoir for water and would slowly drain. Now, all that has been filled and raised, um, which is, you know, co- obviously causing more problems down the line.
Alright, so, I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but so this entire subdivision. Where Twin Pines are, where these three commercial lots are, where these six homes recently built by Scogman are. And where all the houses here to the um east, southeast are built. Were all built on fill. Back in the original plan, like Wendell talked about, I think it was from like nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, somewhere in, in that era. The entire area was originally in a floodplain. And was designed to be filled, to be up out of the floodplain and was designed to have internal drainage. To take the drainage away, to get it towards Prescott's Creek. So, these two lots just never got filled as originally designed. So, they have now been filled. It's, the drainage easements were designed to handle that flow. So even though that they were never filled. The original design was based on them being filled, just like everything else that was filled.
But would you say that the water I showed you and the resulting flooding is uh going by design, by plan?
Uh, so, you know, I can't look at that picture and say is every drop of that water. Within the drainage easement, I would assess. That the vast majority of it, if not all of it, but for sure the vast majority of it is within that drainage easement. As designed, uh, the picture that shows the fence. Um, the, the neighbors have built fencing that some of the neighbors have built fencing that goes. Quite a ways into the drainage easement on their side of the property. There, on the property in question, there's a fifty foot drainage easement. Now, that's on their property. There's also, I don't remember the size, if it was a twen- maybe Wendell knows, but. I don't, it wasn't a fifty foot, but I don't know if it was a, a, a twenty-five foot additional drainage easement. On the adjoining property owner's property and they've built fences and other things, trees. I think even a shed in one location in the drainage easement.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, um. Uh, so again, my concern is still that, you know, before that water, you know, um, I realized that. The water where it was going before wasn't necessarily where it was designed to go, but that's where it went and that was working. Um, it's no longer working, so. You know, it, what, so what happens if we add six more homes, you know, with basements in that area? There's even more water uh displaced. So that, you know, like I said, that's my concern is I don't wanna get flooded every time it rains. And that was my concern from the beginning and, you know, it bared out this summer.
I don't, Wendell, I don't know if you have any more thoughts or comments on. The drainage system and if it is or is not working and what potential. Changes might need to be considered?
Eric, this is Jamie. Before, before Wendell answers that. Maybe a good question to ask would be if he could explain exactly what kind of flooding he was talking about. And what, what maybe was where the water came in or, or. How it got into the homes on Twin Pines there, just so we've all got maybe a little better idea of where this water was coming from.
Sure, so like, um, were we talking, um. Heavy rain events or were we not necessarily talking heavy rain events? And it was flooding on Prescott's Creek that was actually backing up into the area for the homes that took on water? Was it just. Seeping uh into the basement or was it actually. Overland flow that was flowing um across the land and into the basements? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm curious to know exactly that. Does it, was it, was, you know, and, and some folks. Will consider flooding backups through the drain tile systems under their homes or things like that. I mean, was it. Was that where it was coming from? Was it coming in through, seeping in through the walls? Did it flow? Into and, and actually come in like a, a doorway or a window or something like that, that it got that high, um. Or did it, did it get into the building or just got it right around the, the building but never came into it, I guess, is.
Is he asking me that question? I apologize.
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, um, yes, so, um. That area that has a red box, um, near the bottom of this drawing. Uh, Charm Drive and Twin Pines. Ice, yes, um, and if you kind of uh bring your mouse down further into the right, I think that's where the water comes from. Um, and then it fills into this area that we're looking at. That, uh, that's the best that I can see, you know, from my property. I think that's what's happening. So I showed you a picture where, you know, the water was, you know, feet deep, um, I don't know, twelve feet from my house. My flooding came from the drain. I don't know where, um, I can't speak with the other two homes off of Heather that were flooded. I don't know where theirs came from. But mine be, uh, came because I don't think the drain, the drainage was not able to handle it.
Yeah, thi- this is Christian. If I can speak again, I mean, I live right there at that house, I guess, said that corner one right there, yep. It, it's not from the initial runoff. It's whenever Prescott cannot discharge quick enough into Blackhawk. And then it begins to back up and all of that water comes down my ditch. On my property and comes right underneath the Charm Drive and continues to back up. And I, I pulled that picture up. We had six inches of rain in twenty-four hours on June ninth and that, that is the worst I did ever see it. Living there and that's, that's what happens. It just continues to rise and rise and rise and back up, you know. Multiple hours after the rain event, not, you know, not during the rain event itself. Cause I looked at the, the time, it looks like it was nine o'clock when it was the highest. I think the rain was over around noon that day, so it's a, it's a delayed effect that, that the water goes underneath the Charm Drive there.
And the date, the date, um. I think my place flooded on June twenty-second.
Was that another one, probably? Yeah, I've got a, I do, I do have that one as well on here in pictures as well, the twenty, yeah, the twenty-second, I apologize, was actually the worst than the ninth, now that I look at the pictures. I have a picture of a guy kayaking down the, my ditch.
Yeah, so again, yeah, there, there were people kayaking through there, so. I, I realize that, you know, we've been told that the plan, that everything's going according to plan, but. Isn't this also, you know, a fifty-year-old plan that is in the middle of a revision as well?
This is Schrader. I'm probably not the, um, expert to address that question, but I, I would say, um. The plan for the drainage was done when the original development was done. The floodplain maps is a, you know, separate issue that they're. In the process of updating the floodplain maps now and they're basing it on. The current contour data that they had available, which that contour data was before this area was filled. And it is putting a lot more area um in this subdivision in. A lot of the homes and the immediate yard area right around the homes are out, but there are a lot of, um, you know, backyards. Uh, some front yards, uh, in the preliminary floodplain maps shown as in. And some homes shown as in based on the contour data that FEMA had available. I know a lot of the residents of this subdivision came to the public input meeting that FEMA held. To talk about the map and the city of Waterloo discussed it with FEMA and the D N R who are kind of jointly. Uh, developing the new maps and tried to get them to do some additional study of this area. But they, um, declined to do that, so that may very well. Um, necessitate that individual homeowners, if their home does end up getting put in the floodplain on the new. Uh, map, may have to look at seeing if they can go through a process. To get a letter of map amendment to remove that their structure from the floodplain. Based on more specific detailed elevation information around their property.
Okay, yeah, so I guess, you know, my, my concern was, you know, when this started, you know, years ago, we. Um, we raise our concerns about this, the, the water has always been, for whatever reason. Um, I would say inefficient at draining at best. And now the whole area has been filled in, you know, with, I don't know, ten, fifteen feet of dirt. And for the first time in twelve years, my, you know, my fears of being flooded happened. So, my question is, my fear is that if we continue down this path, it's going to be a yearly, a yearly thing. As we add more homes and displace more dirt uh and water.
Um, yeah, this is Wendell with VJ Engineering again. I'm, uh, uniquely familiar with this area. I live at the corner of Fourth and Shawless and for probably close to the last twenty years. I've made hay off of that area between Southland Park and Prescott Creek. And, uh, also the property where I'm at. Used to be, uh, there used to be a curve that went through the pasture and there was a bridge in the middle of the, of the curve. In ninety-four, uh, they took that out and straightened the road and also changed the creek. The significance of that is that, uh, in order to help with flooding here. They actually undersized that bridge somewhat so that Shawless Road actually. Um, kinda acts as a holding area. Um, but it's still on, uh, sometimes it really sucks for a hayfield over there. Uh, we made hay, I think on a Wednesday this year and then, as you said, people were kayaking across on the Saturday. Um, if, uh, if the timber, timber line or whatever. If that is the only residents out there. The floodwater would still come up and surround that property completely and then go down as Prescott's Creek came up and went down. Uh, the drainage, uh, easements that are, that go through there are significant enough. They can handle all the water that falls on that property and runs towards uh Prescott Creek. But in reality, they also convey that floodwater as it comes up from Prescott Creek back towards the homes. There really is no way to have one without the other. Um, the, the only possible uh improvements. And I think this was in the original uh design calculations would be if. The bridge at Highway sixty-three were to be increased. Um, but that would have to be, you know, something the D O T would desire to do. And I don't know that that's in the foreseeable future. Uh, other than that, um, yeah, you're gonna have some times where you're gonna have flood events that are larger. Uh, other than that, um, yeah, you're gonna have some times where you're gonna have flood events that are larger. Um, and this year I think was, was larger, it actually, uh, if I remember right, it did cross over top Shawless Road for a bit, which is, which is the exception. Um, but, yeah, that's, unfortunately, that's kind of the way that this subdivision was designed. Uh, and even though it is very inconvenient, um, that's, it's functioning the way it's supposed to, the water comes up when the creek comes up. When the creek goes down, the water goes away.
Yeah, so I, I guess that's my concern, is that everybody keeps telling me that i- it's working the way it's supposed to, but something's not working. For the first time, we were flooded, um, as, you know, as more land was added to it. And that was, that was our concern from the, when this started.
Wendell, this is Virginia, um, has the detention basin been built yet? Or is that still, because I see it on the map that we have, um, and that's in addition to the fifty, another fifty-foot, the fifty-foot easement, I think Eric was showing us. Is the detention, does the detention basin still need to be constructed?
Yes.
Okay, so not only would there be the two existing easements that drainage easements that Eric was showing on the map, but there would be another detention basin as well? Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
Can I comment there? This is Mike Meany again. I, I do work with the Beckman family as a real estate professional, and they have secured one bid for that work. Covid's really slowed us down in getting multiple bids. Uh, we're working on that portion of it, but before anything could be done or sold, we realize, and the Beckman family realizes, that that retention pond would have to be put in according to the specifications.
Thank you, Mike. Um, are there other, um, persons on the phone that are here to speak on this agenda item that haven't had a chance to yet? Hey, um, Eric or John, were there any other, uh, concerns that you received that you wanted to share or you had to share yet? Okay.
I have a quick question if I could just ask, cause I'm not an engineer, but did not Mr. Whitmire talk about sanitary sewer backing up into his home? And we're really talking about storm water and storm sewer? I mean, is there a difference or should it be treated the same? Uh, it's always been my understanding sanitary is, is piped and this is storm, which is open ground.
Uh, I don't, I did not, I did not have sewer water in my basement.
Oh, it's seepage?
Everyone that has issues in this community, it's from water entering the basement, and then the sump pump either not keeping up or having issues with the sump pump usually. I've never heard of anyone with a sewer issue.
I thought that's what Mr. Whitmire had said.
And I do, and I do have a, a sump pump, um, that functions as well and was functioning that day, just was, I mean, it wasn't able to keep up.
Yeah, I know, I do know my neighbors across the ditch, there's three houses and, and when it does rain a lot, I mean, there's a run almost every like fifteen to thirty seconds depending on the rain event.
Um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Ms. Holdeman, so moved.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing's closed, um, is there any discussion amongst the commissioners or uh, a motion to be made?
So our, yeah, so our next, um, public hearing.
I would, I would just remind everybody that if you've, you're, if, to mute your microphone unless you're gonna talk. It's okay, it happens. All right, um, is there a motion either for, to approve this, um, agenda item or? Neither request?
This is Holdeman, I'll move that, uh, we approve the recommendation. Um, the request by L and B B LLC for a site plan amendment to the R three RP planned residence district located southeast of twenty-nine fifty, Southland Drive be approved because, for the following reasons, the proposed use would appear to have a positive impact on the area by bringing additional housing on vacant land within a consider, excuse me, residential area. The proposed use has a drainage designed to properly direct storm water from the development through the plating process. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and would be compatible to existing development. The proposed development is within the density requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district. The area was previously approved for commercial uses, so single-family homes would appear to be more compatible with and have a positive impact on the neighborhood. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area as the lots sit upon previously built local roads, subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, and so on, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera.
You have a second?
Second, second from Do Not.
Hey, any discussion?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, all right, any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Um, Eric, does this go on to? Any additional, does this go under the board of adjustment or?
This is Schrader with staff, this is a site plan amendment, so it will go on to the city council. Um, we're kind of dealing with changes when the planning and zoning commission meets, changes of when the city council meets. Council now meets on the first and third Mondays of the month with the term, the deadline for getting stuff on the agendas a little earlier. So we have not, uh, identified what council meeting this item will be on yet, but we will, um, uh, work with the applicant, get that identified and send out additional notice.
So, uh, Mr. Whitmire, um, you'll have, you'd have another opportunity to talk to the city council, um, and address concerns, you know, if there are broader concerns for that neighborhood and the overall drainage. Um, also too, if you have more information or can, I'm not sure how far along the FEMA process is with that floodplain, um, but, you know, there are other venues to, to express your concerns and, um, see if there's another, um, solution for the broader, um, neighborhood there. Um, okay.
And Eric, I have a question about the time of the, um, of the meetings of the city council.
Five thirty.
Hello, okay.
Five thirty.
Okay, the items for the city council, do they still have to be within the month? So it's still month to month, right, for, uh, meetings of the city council and also items that have to move on to the city council agenda, right?
Well, I get, I'm not quite sure I'm fully understanding your question, but, yeah, the city council meets on the first and third Mondays. The deadline, uh, to get something on a city council agenda is twelve days ahead of the meeting. That's, um, a week more than it used to be. Um, so we'll just have to, uh, work with the applicant to make sure we've got all of the information necessary and then identify which city council meeting we can get it, uh, scheduled on. It is considered a hearing, so we first gotta get a council action to set a data hearing, so we'll, we'll get it worked out and send out new notice.
I mean, that, my question was referring to that if it was, if it was something that was time-sensitive to get something on the agenda by the end of the month or by a certain time within a month, um, during, um, the time that it would have gone to the city council, um, it would still be under those restrictions or those requirements of getting it on and getting it considered within a month, right? It wouldn't be able to be delayed any extra normal, any extra time than normal because of the new schedule.
Uh, it potentially could, I, I'm not aware of any restrictions or limitations on an item having to be within a month.
Okay, all right.
All right, the next item on the agenda is.
Can you real quick? When, when Mr. Schrader says that there will be notices sent out, does that mean the same people who received notices before?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. All right, um, next item on the agenda is, um, a request, a request by Said Dzarevich for an appeal of the city engineer to allow for a second driveway on a lot less than one hundred feet in width at thirty-six sixty Canterbury Court in the C one commercial district. First, we'll have the staff report, please.
This is starting off with staff. Um, it would, it would not appear to, um, the request would have a negative impact on the area, although it could set precedent for other requests. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions area as the site is a low-traffic volume called the Sack Street. The lot in question is Zone C one, commercial district is the zone since the adoption of zoning ordinance, twenty-four seventy-nine in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows, to the north is professional office and multifamily residential, Zoned R four, multiple family district, to the south is commercial and multifamily residences, Zone C one, commercial district. To the east is professional office and residential zones R four and R three, multiple residence district. And to the west is commercial, Zone C one CZ, conditional commercial district. The area includes professional offices built between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen ninety-four, multifamily residential built between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen seventy-nine, and commercial built between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand five. The applicant is requesting an appeal of the city code requirement restricting lots to less than a hundred feet of, in width to a single driveway. Um, the lot in question is only seventy-five feet wide, twenty-five feet less than is required, or a second driveway. Um, the applicant owns both the lot, the house was built on, along with a lot to the south that he currently uses as for his business. The applicant transferred land from his business property to the vacant lot to allow for enough room to build a single-family home. The planning department is the first department to sign off on building permits, which was done since the site plan met the requirements of the zoning code. A building permit was issued, but the engineering department did not sign off on the permit application. The applicant or his contractor never applied for a driveway permit, and if he had, the engineering department would have informed the applicant that they would have needed to resist, to remove the existing driveway, um, as part of the permit for the new driveway to reach the garage of the new home. The engineer, some, the city engineer has submitted a letter stating opposition to the request due to the width of the lot and the fact that it would set a precedent, um, that would lead to the other request. Um, as I noted, um, he does own the lot to the south, and he says that he needs this second driveway to park a pizza oven. Um, there is some language barrier there, so just keep that in mind. Therefore, if the commission does recommend the request, um, for appeal to the city engineer to recommend approval, um, then it should be for the following reasons, the street in question is a low-traffic street that dead ends to the north. The second driveway was present before construction of the new house. A building permit for the new building was issued without the driveway permit. If the commission recommends denial, it would be for the following reasons. The engineering department is opposed to the request as it does not meet the minimum requirements for the ordinance. A driveway permit for the new driveway was not issued, and it will create a precedent allowing a second driveway on lots less than a hundred feet wide.
Hey, are there any questions for John?
Uh, Commissioner Sirfling, I have a question. Um, I didn't under, couldn't understand the words about why he needs the original driveway there?
Um, he said he need, I mean, like I said, there is kind of a language barrier there with him, but from what I understood from him, he needed it to park a pizza oven? Not sure.
Do what about oven?
A pizza oven, so I'm, like I said, I'm not sure exactly what, I mean, when I've driven by there, um, there's been a, um, a van parked there, but I've never seen anything else parked there.
Does that original older driveway go to his business?
No, it goes basically along the side of his house.
Yeah, I saw that from the pictures. Is, I couldn't tell how wide that, um, or older driveway is, cause it looks like the one to the house has a double driveway, I mean, you know?
Yeah, it's a single-wiff driveway.
Okay.
Hey, um, is Ms., Mr. Dzarevich or someone on behalf of him on the call? Okay, uh, is anyone else on the call that is here to speak on this agenda item?
Jamie Knudsen, city engineer, obviously you guys have the letter from me in your packet, um. Couple just quick comments. Generally speaking, if somebody wants to park alongside their house, that's allowed. What we require is a certain-sized driveway between the sidewalk and the street, but then they can go wider from the sidewalk up to the house. They can actually widen that out to par, and then be able to park around the side of their house. So that is certainly an option here in this particular case, but more importantly, the bigger issue is this thing was built without permits, at least from engineering's perspective, and my concern is that all of a sudden, and I know everybody talks about precedent, but, but what worries me is that people start, well, we put it in, we'll just go beg for forgiveness after the fact, and when we didn't even have a chance to review this thing, um, I have a real issue with that, just for the simple fact that past practice from our department for as long as I've been here has always been, if they were going to do something like this, we would have required them to remove that existing driveway as part of the condition of getting a new driveway. Um, so I don't know that, in my opinion, we shouldn't be rewarding somebody for going around the rules and, and, uh, allowing them to have this, at least the driveway in for this particular piece. Again, I, it's not the parking beyond the property line. That's their property, they can do as they please, but within reason, but, uh, the stuff between the sidewalk and the street, that's my responsibility, and this one just, it, it concerns me. Um, I don't like telling people no, but in this particular case, I think it's, uh, it's the right decision to have them remove, uh, that driveway, um, between the sidewalk and the curb, and, uh, put in full height, uh, full height curb, or full height curb in that section as well.
So Jamie, this is Virginia, um, so you're saying it's a little hard from the sketches? So Jamie, this is Virginia, um, so you're saying it's a little hard from the sketches. You're saying that the original uh plan provided by the applicant when he applied for the building permit. Didn't show a driveway, so it was the presumption that the existing driveway would.
Would have been used, yes. And they certainly could have used that, they certainly. And, and that's what I said in the letter, I don't know if the intent was initially to use it and then they changed their mind after the fact, they moved the house. I, I really can't speak to that, but when they don't show. Certain things, I mean, they weren't being entirely truthful in their application either as far as what they were doing or what they were wanting. Um, again, that's, you know. Where I'm coming from is that we try to take people at their word, but if, you know, they've gotta be willing to. To put down on paper what it is that they want to do, um, so we can make an appropriate decision based on that.
So if we deny the appeal, then they have to remove the whole driveway? Or do they have an option if we allow it to just remove the, the part that you're talking about Jamie from the um. Past the property line to the street?
The piece that they would need to remove would be from the sidewalk or the property line out to the street. The driveway approach itself and then the curb and gutter in the street, they would need to take out a piece of that because. Normally the curb height is six inches and in your driveway, it's about two inches, so we'd want them to take out. That piece of curb and gutter in through the old driveway and put in a new piece so it has full height curb, otherwise. If we don't do that, people take out the old drive, take out the driveway, they're still gonna drive through there because they can drive right over the curb because there's nothing to stop them, so. That's what I would like to see, the piece, the concrete beyond the sidewalk or the property line, that can stay in place. Um, and they can use that however they wish, but uh, it's just the piece from the property line out to the road that I would like to see removed.
Thank you.
So, uh, this is Do Not, I have a question about their mobile, uh, their mobile food stand or their pizza oven or whatever. Whatever the term that was being used. Do they have a different place where they can park that on their property and still have access to it if they want to do a mobile food stand?
This is Schrader with staff, can you see the picture on the screen?
Yeah.
Alright, so and can you also see my cursor?
Yes.
Alright, so this is the old driveway and this is the new driveway, so what. Jamie is requesting that the appeal be denied, which means this portion of that driveway would have to be removed. But behind the sidewalk could be left and they could pour additional cement in this area here. Connecting it to the new driveway so that they could still park in this area. That makes sense?
Yeah.
That was a perfect explanation, Eric.
Eric, thank you for your visuals throughout the meeting, by the way. Um, one more chance, uh, Mr. Dzorovich or someone on behalf of him is not on the call, correct? Any other discussion or do we have a motion?
This is Holderman, I'll move for denial for the following reasons. That the engineering department is opposed to the request as it does not meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance. A driveway permit for the new driveway was not issued. And will create a precedent allowing a second driveway on lots that are less than one hundred feet wide.
This is nice to go, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I wanna have a little discussion here, I like what Jamie's. Um, suggestion was and the way that Eric displayed it with his presentation. So why can't we just do that? I mean, what Jamie said. And what Eric just demonstrated with his presentation just now and just do that and let him. Have the piece where he can put his mobile food truck on his property. And then meet the requirements that um that staff is asking about.
Eric, the way I, or I understood it is that by denying the appeal. He would have to remove the part that Jamie was talking about and Eric showed us. And then he could still have the option to do what um Eric showed us with the cursor. So that was, that was what I believe.
Yep, this is Schrader staff, that's correct. The driveway appeal is just on the approach part from, you know, between the sidewalk and the street. The driveway appeal doesn't uh, you know, have anything to do with the other part, so they don't, if the. Uh, driveway appeal is denied, then yeah, per engineering requirements, he'll have to remove that part. But yes, the, he would not have to remove the other part and could move forward with that connection to the other driveway.
Yeah, I'm on board with that, I'm on board with the motion as, as presented by Craig.
Um, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those oppose, any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is request by the city of Waterloo for an amendment to the city. Of Waterloo Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission Administrative Rules to move the monthly meeting to the second Tuesday of the month. Uh, we have the proposed changes in our packet, um, Eric, John, is there anything else you wanted to add?
This is Schrader with staff, no, as we've uh discussed last month, we're looking to do this because of the change to city council meetings. We think generally speaking, this will uh help us better align items. Coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission to getting on to a city council meeting as quickly as possible. Um, we had only heard of one commission member that had commented of a potential conflict. But um, we didn't hear any confirmation on a conflict, we had um reached out again, but did not hear. Any response.
Any just further discussion from commissioners or? Okay, we have a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved to approve the amendment as, as presented.
Alright, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, motion carrying. So that means then that our next meeting will be on February ninth, then is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, okay. Next item is an update um by the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments. On the progress of an update to the city of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, uh, this is Schrader with staff, I will turn it over to Nick. With Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, who the city of Waterloo was contracted with. Nick, I believe I just made you host, so you should be able to share your screen as necessary as well, take it over.
Nick, thank you by the way for being so patient through our meeting, so.
Of course. It's kinda interesting, I used to be on, on your guys' side of things, so it's kinda, kinda fun to watch it from the other, the other side of the table. Uh, I think Brian's gonna do most of the talking, I'm gonna do some of the screen sharing here, I'm gonna see if I can get it to work. Um. Give a little practice shot.
There you go.
Alright, you there, Brian?
I'm there.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Eric, how are you?
I'm good.
Alright, so um, real quickly, uh, Nick and I are working with the city of Waterloo and. Uh, at a number of different levels to update the comprehensive land use plan that the city currently has. And uh, we had sent over some documents. Uh, and what we decided to do was just to kinda walk through them in very short order this evening. Uh, give you an idea of what we sent over, give you an idea of where we're at in the process. Uh, as you all know, when you review your uh staff reports from uh the planners there that you've got on board. That they always refer to this document called the Comprehensive Plan. Um, and many of you may have a copy of that, hopefully all of you have a copy of that and. And trust that, you know, you fall asleep with it at night or whatever, so no, I'm just teasing you. Um, but uh, what we're gonna do is update that document, that document is uh about seventeen years old right now. And so some of the data there is, has gotten a little, little aged and uh certainly we've got a new census. Uh, that we've all participated in and we've got some new data and, and the city has grown and developed quite a bit since two thousand and three. And uh, city engaged or contracted with our organization, if you don't know much about InterCog, we're a six county. Uh, regional planning agency that acts as extension of city staff. And so, uh, we also, uh, as Nick indicated, uh, serve in similar roles or have served in similar roles and. And uh, uh, have really the same education and background that your staff does and so. Uh, we're just acting in that capacity as an extension to update the plan. And we'll be working with the planning commission now, as, as you may know. Uh, planning commissions charge, not only is our zoning matters, but typically our planning matters as well. And uh, so what we're gonna do tonight real quickly is uh, we're gonna just walk you through a little bit about the plan, so you have an idea. And that's the graphic that Nick has up for you. Uh, that comprehensive plan actually can serve a number of different roles. Uh, the one you would see most often as a commissioner or as a staff member would be that centerpiece. Uh, that center pyramid and so, um, you would see that comprehensive plan at the bottom of the pyramid. So it's kind of the foundation, if you will, and that's the reason why we selected the graphic that we did is that it really acts as the foundation. For your zoning ordinance, your subdivision ordinance, uh, building codes, your permitting processes. And is really intended to be kind of that overarching piece. And so that's really the role that uh, we are uh anticipating it be used as. But other departments or other purposes for that plan uh could include one of financial means, which would be kind of on the left-hand side. Uh, the city does perform and put together a capital improvements program or plan. Um, then that can be tied to the city's strategic plan and then ultimately the annual budget again. We're looking at that comprehensive plan be kind of the guiding light. Um, or the overall um, uh, strategy, if you will, for the community that is very long range. And so what that tells you is, is if it's gonna last twenty years or in this case seventeen years, like you've looked at. Uh, in the current plan, that it be very general in nature. Um, it's not like the, the post-it notes I keep in front of myself, a checklist or anything like that. It's intended to be very broad, uh, to look very long range and the only way it's got any lasting power is if it is very general. Uh, the other purpose of a comprehensive plan then can serve as the foundation for other area plans. And so you, the city of Waterloo uses both TF or urban renewal. As well as urban revitalization, which was tax abatement and those have independent plans specific to an area. Uh, you've worked on a downtown riverfront Renaissance plan, you have neighborhood associations. Um, and you've got corridor plans in the community as well, and so all of those. Uh, then can look to the comprehensive plan to be the foundation. And our job is to work with you to update the plan, so where are we at? Um, obviously, we've been working on the background information. So, um, Nick, if you wanna flip to that next graphic, which would be the actual plan itself. Um. Again, you may have seen this and it may have a graphic in it, and so I'll just have Nick, if you wanna scoot ahead to about page six in the PDF. Um, this is a big document and no, we're not gonna give you a quiz on it or anything like that. We just want you to look at certain elements as we go through the update, so Nick, can you back up to about page six in the PDF? Um, for me and, and let's get to the purpose, so if you look at certain pages or, or pieces of it. Um, what we'd like you to do is look at that purpose again, it's about three pages in length. And tells you a little bit about why we're doing this, well, we've given you some idea. Um, not only is, is it the foundation document for a number of your regulations and other policies and procedures. It's legally required in the state of Iowa that we have this document. So as you read that purpose in the intent, look at, this is why we're doing it and so. Um, certainly you'll see uh, the, the purpose, you're gonna see then a series of bullet points on the next couple of pages. Which tells you what our intent is for the document, that it's general, that we look at things in a tiered and in a balanced fashion. That we not outrun our services, uh, that we continue to allow for public input in the process. And so those are kind of the guiding principles, if you will, uh, for the plan, so. If you're looking for the Cliff Notes when you're reading through this document, um, those of you that know what Cliff Notes are. Um, not that I ever used them in college, um, but uh, as you look at the, the document and you wanna look through it. Uh, do look at the purpose and the intent and get an idea or a feel for what we've got in the document. Nick, well, if you wanna go ahead and scroll ahead, I'll, I'll continue to talk. Uh, on about page forty-eight of the PDF, uh, you're gonna start to come across land use sections. And we're working on those pieces that Nick is scrolling past. We're updating the data, we're giving you new information, we're doing that all on our own or simultaneously. As uh, we're gonna work with you on the, on the land use plan, so. Um, as you get to about page again forty-eight, you're gonna come to um, a lot of maps, you're gonna come to. Uh, really the physical features, there's your floodplain map, you guys were talking about that here a little bit ago. So, um, again, we're going to integrate in a lot of this information in the, the document as well as updated. As, as new information is available, so, um, if you wanna get to about page forty-eight. There you go, so there was a, the beginning of the land use section is on forty-eight. And as you look at it, again, if you're looking for, you know, what are the pieces? Uh, that we would expect you to have some familiarity with, it's really in that land use section, so starting on page forty-eight. And then looking at how we broke apart the plan some seventeen years ago. And we looked at evaluating how the community would grow and we broke it into segments or pieces. Um, throughout and then kind of bit off one piece at a time. And we evaluated based on their access, those areas accesses to service. Uh, primarily sewer, water, street, all those things you talk about in that staff report. And in the, the requests that come to you, and so what we did was, um, we in essence, uh. Are, are, have learned that the easiest way to tackle a large city like Waterloo is to break it off into manageable pieces. And then make sure the pieces all fit together, so as you go through and, and Nick, you can kind of scroll past that. We broke the city into pieces and said, you know, first off, let's talk about infill development and infill growth. And then let's look at those areas that are vacant or that may be open or agricultural. And those that areas that are serviced, again, looking at sewer and water and street and those kinds of things, so. Uh, we took a pretty logical approach to uh defining what the plan was for the city, so if you wanna scoot just past. Um, you're gonna come to, uh, again, some maps, the future land use map is what the city staff then. Refers to, and I think that's probably right there is a future land use map, so. As your staff refers in their staff reports to a future land use map or the comprehensive plan. This is the map actually that they're visualizing, they've got a very large version. Um, in, in the planning department that they use um, on a regular basis. And this is the reference then that's made back to, so uh, again, because it's a legal instrument, this is a policy document. But because the city is and does have to look and refer to the plan, um, this is the guide that they're looking at. So, uh, they are looking at this map, they're looking at that purpose and intent. And, and so that when they bring you recommendations as staff, they're making sure that there's some consistency and reference back to the plan. And so, uh, those are the documents that they're looking at, again, there are some goal statements then. Nick, if you wanna zip ahead a little bit. Um, to about page, um, let's go ahead to about page, uh, I think about sixty-nine-ish. Um, you're gonna see how the city refers to or relates to the neighboring communities. Because Waterloo, as you all know, is a member of a metro area and you. And you have edges that touch other jurisdictions in terms of land use. And so above that, Nick, in terms of the implementation. And so you have those edges and how do you relate to the edges? And so again, there's an implementation section that is right above this, Nick. There you go. The implementation pieces. So if we asked you to look at anything, we're asking to look at the purpose, we're asking you to look at the land use maps. We're asking you to look at these land use goals. Again, these start on about page sixty nine of the PDF, not the document page, but the PDF page, because the PDF will include your table of contents. But if you, as a commission, would be so kind as to look at those goals, we can excerpt them out of the plan and get them to you, make them a little bit easier. But you want to see how the scope fits together, we would ask you to start to review those those particular pages. The third document that we brought you, Nick, if you want to click over to the smart planning is, so what's happened in the state of Iowa since two thousand and three when you put your plan in place? Well, we've had a number of natural disasters, as many of you know, and and probably the biggest one being that two thousand and eight flooding as well as tornado event. Our region, we serve a six county area and our region was actually X marks the spot for that huge EF five tornado and the flooding of the cedar. And so we had a number of events, as did most of the state of Iowa. And the state legislature then took it upon themselves to actually back up. Believe it or not, they backed up about ninety years. And the the legislation for planning and zoning has been on the books since the nineteen twenties in Iowa for counties, the nineteen forties. And the interesting thing is, is there was never a definition or working documents established for what actually constitutes this thing called a comprehensive plan, which of course the state law requires. And so the legislature, after the oh eight floods and after the tornado, sat down and actually defined what constitutes a comprehensive plan and what actually constitutes comprehensive planning as an activity if you are a city or a county in the state of Iowa. And so what they did was they said, okay, we're going to come up with these ten smart planning principles that all local government should be using as they're develop the plan. They also defined then some guidance in the form of about fourteen different elements that we have to include in the plan or at least address in the plan. Obviously, each jurisdiction is different in Iowa. And so some to a degrader, a greater degree and some to a lesser degree, depending on the community and the wants of the community and itself. And so we are now bound by those smart planning principles and those fourteen guidelines. And so we will be walking the community through the process using them. And so where does that leave us today? Well, the city asked about forty persons to participate in what we called a task force. And Nick and I and your staff walked this task force of persons through three electronic meetings, not unlike today's meeting. And we walked them through a series of questions, we walked them through a series of surveys that were built around these ten smart planning principles and those fourteen guidelines. And we quizzed them about their attitudes and their opinions as it relates to a number of different areas, everything from housing to transportation to land use to how does the city work together with other communities to community, quality of life, to again, public works, public services. And we ran them through a number of of paces across those three meetings. And we've gathered that information then from that task force with the idea being that if you buy into the metaphor of of track and field, which long, long time ago I was involved in track and field. But we kind of view this planning process as being like a relay race. And so this task force really took the baton and they started the process. And they are then handing off to you as the planning commission the information that they generated in those three meetings. And so what Nick has been working on is he's assembled kind of working drafts for those those responses and those surveys. And we, after today, will be sharing those with staff with the idea being that they're going to get passed forward to the planning commission. And you'll carry those forward. And what they are is really to you in terms of relationship is as the planning and zoning commission for the city of Waterloo, that task force is acting as your planning and zoning commission. They are handing you a series of comments and recommendations and direction for helping you put together an update to those goals and those objectives that are in that two thousand and three document. And so they're they're giving you input, they're giving you responses, they're giving you guidance as best as forty leaders in the community can do. And so we're going to pass that along to you then, probably in the in the very near future. And then start to update this plan. So what we wanted to do was, number one, just kind of get you up to speed with where we're at. Those task force meetings, by the way, took place in mid-November and then through December. So we literally are coming to you right after we got done with them. And the idea being that over the course of some work sessions with you as a planning commission, we will develop a new draft of that two thousand and three plan. And then from there, we will take that back to the task force and then we'll push it through a formal public input process, not unlike that which you conducted for your rezones and your site plans this evening, where we actually have noticed public hearings that we will advertise and things like that. But what we've done is just really tried to roll out a much larger public participation piece on the front end so as to give you some direction as a commission so that you can help us update it and we can do the best job that we possibly can for the city council for the city of Waterloo. So all of that said, that's kind of where we're at. Nick, did I miss anything or Eric or anything?
I think you pretty well got it, Brian. So I've got that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, questions from the the commission or staff? Again, we've been working with staff to set up all these meetings and and with apologies on the front end, this is all very hard, as you know all too well, doing this electronically and virtually. You know, we're just going to wind our way through it and do the best that we possibly can. So any questions from the planning commission?
Okay, this is Eric Do Not. I've got a question for planning staff to start with. We didn't get a copy of this presentation in our packets or beforehand. So this was the first time where I was actually, this is the first time I think anybody's seen this document in this meeting, but not beforehand. So that's one question. And number two, when does the when does this document finally, finally get finalized and published out as a working document that the that the city or the public work with?
Well, to some degree, Eric, I could try and answer that for you. To some degree, that's going to depend on how long it takes us to get through it as a commission and as staff as we put it together. So where we're going, Eric, is with you as a commission, we're looking for a little bit of input. When we updated this plan in two thousand and three, what we did was we held a work session in front of the regular planning commission meeting. So as a planning commission, you you're accustomed to meeting at four PM. And so that's terrific. We can either meet in front of the commission meeting or after the commission meeting, or we could go to separate dates for work session and just focus on this plan, Eric, so that we have more or less your undivided attention. The purpose of today is really just to introduce you to the topic and introduce you to where we're going and what we're doing. It was not necessarily to ask for action or to go anywhere beyond really just getting you acclimated to the fact that we're working on the project with you. So it's probably, Eric, best case, six to eight months out before you'd be holding a public hearing on the document would be my guess.
So we don't need, go ahead, Eric.
This is Schrader with staff. I'm guessing you might have been asking if we need any actions today, which we do not. But yeah, what I was going to say is what he is looking for is kind of some direction on how we're going to meet on this with the commission moving forward. He kind of gave the three options. It's up to the commission, but I would, you know, suggest that we don't do the after the regular commission meetings. So I would advocate that either we identify a set amount of time before the P and Z meeting, depending on availability of everyone, or just schedule a special meeting that'll just be to discuss comp plan at a, you know, date and time to be determined that works for a majority.
This is Cody. I would recommend, I'll throw this idea out there, that maybe we use our old monthly meeting date at four PM to maybe tackle this.
First Tuesday of the month, special meeting.
And then that's, that's where we would get the physical document that we could be looking at during those meetings. Because I don't think I've had a physical document for what was presented today. I mean, I know that Cody held up his book that's, that's not. Is that the current plan?
Yes, it is. It was adopted on February third, two thousand and three.
Yeah, and so I've got that, but I I was thinking, I was thinking the PDF document from Brian that he was showing today.
Yeah, the PDF is, the PDF is that, there is no new plan yet. That's what we're meeting to start discussing what changes should be made to that old plan. So yeah, there is no new plan yet.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, you too.
The cool one that, the cool one that Cody has or Eric or that maybe you guys all have, has the fancy cover on it. The ones we gave you didn't have the fancy cover. Same doc though, if you look at the dates, like Eric said, the date on the front should be that early February two thousand and three date.
Okay. Understand.
Uh, this is Virginia. I would agree with Cody's suggestion. If that works for everyone.
Yeah, we're just, like Eric had indicated, we're just trying to kind of pull you a little bit so we can get these things set up and get it moving. It will take, it will take a considerable effort. But if we want to just default back to your your second Tuesday at four, is that where you were at, Eric, before?
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday, I'm sorry.
We're now moving to the second Tuesday for regular meetings. But yeah, so the suggestion was special meetings on the first Tuesday at four.
Okay. If that, that will work fine for Nick and for I, I, you know, that will not be a problem. And obviously, I'm sure we're going to be digital for a while. So again, if you would take a look at those docs that's were sent out and staff, if you need to send or resend or whatever you need to do, just if you need anything from us, we'll be glad to help you get them out the door and get them to everybody electronically so that you can start to look at those things. Again, just focusing on within the plan, you know, the purpose and the intent at the front. And then take a look at the goals and the objectives and the policies at the back. Do look at the land use maps, both existing and the future land use map, because those are what become critical to you as a planning commission. That's where your staff is running to when they get a request that walks in the door, that's where they're headed. Does it meet the intent? Does it fit within the goals? Does it fit on the map? So that they make the best recommendation to do to you that they can. And then ultimately that you can pass along to council. This document is something that, you know, as a city, we've got to make sure we're consistent with. And so that's our challenge to make it general enough that it doesn't become irrelevant. So what we'll do is we'll plan on then, if it's okay, we'll plan on that first month, that first of the month, like you said, at four o'clock, first Tuesday. And then what we'll do is, within the next couple of days, we're going to feed to staff all those report backs from that task force. With the idea being that when staff is comfortable, they'll send those out to you so that you can start to glean what these forty people, you know, what they evaluated, what they looked at. We just relied on their opinion. You know, some are very much experts in the field in certain things. But in other areas that we still pulled them in, they may have been a little more uncomfortable. But nevertheless, they are residents and they did have certainly some opinions about a number of the different topics. So we'll, we'll get those to staff and they can get those to you. And and maybe by then I'll go ahead and get my camera fixed on my laptop, which went out today, by the way. Welcome to the digital world. And then you can actually see what I look like rather than just a voice. Or maybe, Nick, you just move your mouth and I'll talk or something, I don't know. But yeah, we'll go ahead, get all that resolved. Did that sound like a plan for everybody?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm on board.
All right, anything else for either of us? You guys have been here a long time already today.
Yeah, I mean, just, I think maybe you were already planning on it, but Zoom works nicely. Be able to do the screen share, so.
Yep.
If for some reason we couldn't use the city link.
Yep, we will plan to work, we'll plan to work through the city if that works. And then we'll, we'll let them set the meeting up and and control the Zoom. And and Nick and I can adapt where our communities, we work in about fifty-five different communities in six counties. So, you know, pick your poison, right? Microsoft Teams, GoToMeeting, Zoom, WebEx, whatever it is, we'll just adapt to whatever the city wants to do. So we'll rely on them to set it up through Zoom. Thank you for the suggestion.
Well, thank you both. And again, thank you for waiting, being so patient since you were last on our agenda.
Thank you.
Eric, John, is there anything additional you have?
No.
Okay, if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to motion to adjourn, but I just wanted to say if this may turn out to be my last meeting, because in a couple of days, we're going to have elections for positions coming from the Water of the Commission for Human Rights. So I just wanted to say, if it's my last meeting, that it was a pleasure to serve. And if it's not, this is my final year on the, on this commission. And it will have been a pleasure to serve for my term, so.
Thank you, Eric. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anything else for question? Otherwise, if not, do we have a second to adjourn?
I'll second that to adjourn.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Eric, thank you again for your